Full-time outreach position at the senior center. My question, I do have a couple of questions and I have a couple of observations, a couple of things that probably should be known about in terms of the library's budget going into FY '23. My first question is, that outreach position at the senior center, was that the first time that that outreach position was requested? Has it been requested in previous years, making it from a, making it a part-time position from a part-time position?
Do you want me to answer this?
Sure.
So, the outreach position was originally, well, let me start by saying this. These are all important priorities for the town, but it's not a race to see what comes in the door first. In some years, based upon circumstance, and particularly in light of the recent pandemic that we had, sometimes a need that the town has becomes greater than another need. And we received $300,000 plus in requests from departments, and we were only able to fund $150,000 of them. And really, $60,000 of that was through inefficiencies that we made on our own, on our expense side in order to afford more, okay? Part of the discussion, I think you probably heard if you heard the meeting, is that we do think there will, we're hoping that there is room for growth for other areas as we get a better understanding of our financial position post-pandemic, right? That's a big question mark right now. And I think you've heard me say many times, many, many, many years, that I think funding the library is a priority. That being said, it's, the outreach worker position actually was originally only funded because we were able to get a grant many years ago, and it started as eight hours. And then, we had expanded the hours, the town agreed to fund eight additional hours so that it became a part-time position a couple of years ago. Then there was going to be a reduction in the grant to six hours, and the town had a discussion about if, what made sense at that time, and the COA at that time, and the board or whenever. This is right before the pandemic, the year before, decided that some, in addition to the part-time administrative assistant that was hired, it would be good and a benefit to the town if the outreach worker could also do some administrative duties if we were going to be funding more of the hours on the town side. And that is how the discussion began. So you may have heard me say, this year, when I spoke with the council on aging, their original request, when it came in, was actually for a part-time administrative assistant, another one, because of their type of scheduling with their department, because they are growing their programs much like you, and some of them are on the weekends, and it provides greater flexibility. And having a full-time administrative assistant doesn't serve, doesn't meet the need that they have. But then, the COA went back and they looked at their actual needs based upon the positions and the possibility, and came back and said, 100%, it's outreach. Everything we're doing is about outreach this year, the outreach worker has been working way beyond the part-time, they're doing this and this, it's the greatest need we have right now at the center, and they want to continue to do so. And the relationships that the current outreach worker has made rarely need to be established, you know, she's already made all those. So if they had a request, that would be the request. And that's how it came to be, through the budget process. And so then, the chair and I had a conversation about priorities around the budget, and we really only had the ability to fund one other thing outside of public safety, which the board has been prioritizing for the last couple of years, and that's how it came down. Basically, the needs of the seniors in the community at this moment, right? With the, with the asterisk, and I think you heard them all say, that if there is room within the operating budget, and we, and we're returning to some sort of normalcy, I mean, I personally believe that all of our programs are going to explode post-pandemic, that we, even though we don't typically look at funding positions mid-year unless something changes or some, that we would look at them for September, and once we have a better idea of where we are financially, really. And I would imagine if everything go, I mean, I can't make any promises, it's not up to me, but I would imagine that if everything continues in the direction that it's going, that that position should be, right? But we had no way of knowing any of these, I mean, I, you know, I've been advocating for it to be filled for many years, and we'll continue to do so until it's actually filled, until your hours are restored. That's just a fact. The need is there, I think it's, the community does get frustrated when they don't understand the hours, it's unusual, and we have been expanding slowly over time. But this decision, you know, and I'm sure Mark can actually, we struggle.
I think I understand your point.
Yeah, but I would also say.
I didn't hear it at the last meeting, so I didn't know.
Andrew, if I can just, just say, short answers, has this ever been talked about before? Yes, and I can tell you, as a former FinCom chair and having a very active member of the senior center, living with me for many years, I was lobbied hard by a bunch of the senior citizens that used the outreach, even before they had as many hours as they do now, that it was, as far as they were concerned, was the most important need in the town. So it's not, it's not, it's not a request.
You know, understand that I'm not, I'm not denying that this is not an important thing, position to be filled, and to be full-time at this, at this point in time. I just wanted to get a sense of the background on it and the decision-making process around it. Now that you've told me, that's absolutely fine. I did want to mention, though, in denying the request of the library for additional staff hours, that our total recommended budget for the year is only $250 clear of the municipal appropriation requirement by the state. That's a pretty precarious position to be in. In FY '21, we were 60, about 6,600 over the municipal appropriation requirement. By FY '22, we were only 1,800 over, this year we're only $250 over. So I want just to put that out there to let you know that we're close to waiver territory. If, and if people remember correctly, starting in FY '08, we were in waiver territory for eight years. That is to say, we had to apply for a waiver for eight years. After we moved into a new building, we requested additional service and staff hours for, by my calculation, five or six years. All years in which those requests were made, the requests were denied. So I'm just trying to establish that there's a pattern here, a longstanding pattern. And I'm hoping that you'll see clear, perhaps in the fall, to be able to, you know, help us to move in the right direction. And I, my understanding is, based on the last, based on the last meeting and what I heard, it sounded to me as if the next two priorities would be the library and parks, I do hope that's the case. I don't know what goes into that and why the funding will be available then, when it's not available now. I don't know if anybody wants to speak to that. But other than that, that's, I just wanted to register our situation. It's been a 14-year process for us with no hours restored, once they were cut back in 2000 and, I want to say it was 2010. We used to be open 57 hours a week, we're open 30 hours a week, we've been open 30 hours a week for the last 12 years. Thanks.
Thank you.
Do you want me to speak to his question about funding or no?
Okay.
Sure. Just as a process question, so, I mean, this is good for anybody, about anything that's operational in an operating budget. So, you know, typically in an operating budget, right? You don't want to add any one-time expenditures or make any sort of, you don't want to add any one-time expenditures to your operating budget, and you don't want to add any annual cost to your, middle-of-your-year budgets, right? But we're in such a strange circumstance coming out of COVID, that it's really hard to get a real handle on excess revenue or excess, or excess and deficiencies, right? Or what our free cash position would be, or, you know, there's been a lot of talk the last couple of years about all these different funding sources, but I'm not really talking about that. I'm talking about what does the town's revenue look like post-pandemic? Which, I think, based on all current indications, looks very strong, but we don't know. And the other thing that was a big factor this year, and I was gonna just continue, is that we're in a very unusual situation because the school's request is significantly lower than it has been in the last, I'm gonna say, I don't know, but I'll say 10 years, lower than I've ever seen it be. And so, I don't think anyone here would, would guess that it will continue to stay at below a 2% request for the next couple of years. And as you know, based on the last couple of difficult budget years that we've had, when operations increase anywhere in a budget, whether it's our side or the school's side, we have to make choices. And if we start adding a lot of annual costs now, because it looks like we might have some cap space essentially, we might not have that space in two years, when a request comes in that's much higher. And so we have to be cognizant of those things when we add positions, FTEs, or anything that's annual cost to our budget. And so typically, we don't do it with one-time cash, free cash at a fall meeting, but I think a couple more months of seeing a trending on what's happening around revenues and expenditure post-pandemic, I think we'll have a better idea if this is, you know, even without the school's request, really where we sit. I think that, I think everybody would like a little bit more time on that. I mean, personally, but that's my answer to that, I don't know if you need a follow-up.
No, I appreciate you letting me take the time to discuss our situation, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
They turn into a budget meeting anyway, always. So, glad it was on the agenda.
That's fine. All right, so we'll take that budget and get to work on that, and do our recommendations based on what's due there.
So I'll also remind you, FinCom, because I was thinking of it today, and Mike and I are usually doing it right about now, but what we, in your next scheduled meeting, we have to start looking at the articles on the warrant, right? Once the article is finalized tonight, all financial, all articles that are financial in nature on the warrant will need a recommendation from the FinCom, okay? And so I will put together a spreadsheet that shows you, like I do for the budget, that shows you and have in the past, the balances of what's available funding-wise, and then I, we will go through, and you can ask each of those groups that have submitted, that need a finance, have a financial request, to come and tell, explain to FinCom what they want for those articles. And that typically happens, has to, it has to happen between now and the annual town meeting, so it has to happen in April. But it could be as quick as one meeting, might be, might be two.
Similar, right? Because, well, you have to have the budget here, but you, you need time to talk about it, to make a recommendation, so you're not doing.
So, I'm saying, right, after tonight, we should basically have a dollar-a-month lockdown, and I think you want to schedule a meeting, you know,
I was gonna do it on the fifth.
Next week or whenever, you know, to really, it's, it's, I'll tell you, once you see the available balances, you'll know where you should, you know, and I'll, I'll tell you, I'll advise you where you should probably, you know, recommend, that sort of thing. So it's not that complicated, but it will require discussion, right? So, just keep that in mind.
Okay, yeah, email that to me and I'll set up a meeting for next week for us, Tuesday. Looks like. All right, guys, have you got any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
Thanks.
That's done, much, by. Covered most of that, but there's a little more to help see if we can cover, if that happened. Cindy, do you want to start?
Well, I spoke with Lynn.
Yeah.
So, what we left, the big one for the demolition, and some of your topic sessions, and I left a conversation with Lynn, it seemed like we weren't agreement. But she's probably in a better position to tell you what they actually did decide to do, because I wasn't part of that.
And I know Dan is also on here, so Lynn, do you want to start and then it's Dan, everything's gonna happen?
Sure, yeah, there were only really a couple of things that were left after the last meeting. One of them was the demolition by neglect, and after speaking with Cindy, speaking with other people, it's a very difficult area to get into. And it also, as Cindy pointed out, where you have issues of perception, you can open yourself to travel down the road. So for example, if the historic commission turns around and says that my house is demolition by neglect, it's falling down, I'm not doing anything with it, who's actually making that determination? There isn't anybody on the historical commission who really is qualified to make that. The people that would be qualified would be the building department and the board of health. So what we came to the conclusion, the best way to handle it is actually not to put it in as a bylaw, but it more as a little bit of a process, where if anybody thinks the house is just being allowed to run down, they would contact the historical commission. We would do the research, we would see the age of the property, what's going on with the property, do the, and then notify the building department and the board of health, and they would actually take it from there. They would be the ones that would make that judgment, and, you know, I don't really think, we didn't, I say we, I, we didn't really feel that it was something maybe that the historical commission was qualified to make those kind of decisions. And so, let's put it in the hands of the people that are, but the historical commission as being responsible for this bylaw would be the people that would actually initiate that. So that, so we actually took that section out.
Yeah, that actually makes a lot of sense.
Makes a lot of sense, yeah.
Thanks. So there's no, so there's nothing in the bylaw that's going to trigger a process of somebody intentionally moving windows, leaving it open to the, to the, to the outlets?
Well, yeah, there, there is that point of view, there is that where it comes, if somebody has actually applied for a demolition permit, and it's in the process of a demolition permit, they have to actually maintain that property during the process. That actually is already in the bylaw. But we're talking here more about somebody who has a property that they're just letting it run down, and then, then they start the process, which is what we've had. Then they start the process and they say, oh, wow, you have to see, it's full of mold, it's full of it, because they've allowed that to happen. What we would like to do is actually stop that before it happens, so anybody in town, it doesn't have to be the historical commission.
So what you're saying is, if the building department is doing their job, or the health is doing their job, keeping them running, it never gets to that.
Right, it should never get to that point.
It's outside, and it's outside.
I would just like to crash, and one piece of that statement is, is that if they're doing their job, the board of health nor the building department drives around looking for demolition. But if it's brought to an attention, this is more gonna end up being Lynn or somebody in the store commission drives by, somebody, or anybody drives by and sees it and says, hey, that house is just getting worse by the moment. For instance, a good example would be the, the house down on Route 140 where the soul power fields are.
Big street.
Yeah, that.
At the corner right there. That's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking of.
That house slowly just deteriorated over years, because nobody lived in it, nobody took care of it, but again.
Well, and I think the other thing is, you know, there is this misconception that we're kind of gonna be smacking people over the top of the head every time that they do something in their house, be it in a historic district or demolition, that's not the case at all. What we want to do is, if somebody is seeing a house that is really being neglected, we would like to be able to get into that situation with the homeowner beforehand and see how we can help them. If it's, if it's an historic home, or if it's not necessarily historic, then we can report it to the people who can help, rather than it be a punitive thing, we would like it to be some way that we can help you.
Always been about the idea of being helpful and not being punitive.
Right, and, and that's, I think, what people get scared about. They're scared that, oh my goodness, you know, if I haven't moved my lawn, somebody's gonna come and do something and take my house away. That's not what, any of this, the demolition delay by law, none of that is, is a punitive thing at all. So that's what we decided, you know, on Cindy's recommendation and after talking with the other members of the commission, that let's just, rather than have people getting upset about it, let's take it out and actually put it in the hands of the people who should be doing it anyway.
Perfect.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
I like to use that. Okay, one of the other issues that we had was, and this is a difficult one, is the where we have the fees, if, if people actually do demolish a house. And, you know, we'd, we'd spoken to Cindy about this one too, we had said that there would be.
Is it 300?
It was, yeah, and we had said, you know, again, we reworded that to be up to. We, first we talked about maybe a sliding scale of, you know, if there's one fence, it's a hundred bucks a day, if it's two fences, no, we, we, after we discussed that, and I appreciated and understood where you were coming from on that, Cindy, why are we letting people have one or two or three chances at tearing down houses? I think if we can just put in up to $300 a day, then we're saying, depending on the severity of what you've done, that's what you're gonna be. If, I mean, that, that fee would be more, you know, determined by the select board.
Yeah, I mean, as far as what the actual fee is, I don't, I don't have any concern with that. I think that when, when you had first brought it up, if I remember correctly, would have to do with what can we actually impose and what can, what's, what, what, where does it end? So if it's $300 a day and they don't come and get a building, a, 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 sorry, a demo permit application for six months, do you, is it, can we really charge that money?
And I, I don't know that you necessarily can do that $300 a day. $300 a day is nothing to some people, to a lot of people, it's, you know, existent, pretty much. But I think what we did, well, that figure actually came up, and I think Dan can back me up on this one, we went through all the state, we went through, I can't even tell you how many demo delays that we've been through on this, find, $300 seemed to be the figure. I think the main problem with any kind of fee is who collects it and how, and who has that power, and I guess.
I think that was just the question, so, yeah, again, I mean, it's, the fee portion's been there, it's not, it's not something new. I, my only concern was, was Cindy had thought something, so, if it's, if the, if the committee doesn't want to change it, I, I mean, I don't even know that we've invoked it at any point, have we?
No.
So.
We've never, we've never, you know, find anybody for anything, and that should have happened and didn't.
Yeah.
You know, so I think now we actually, hopefully, have a process, a bylaw that the town votes on and agrees to, that we can say, hey, come on, this is a bylaw, you saw it, you know.
Is that portion new or is that?
It was just, it was not new, but it was amended. I think we actually put in there.
I think I have.
Which we had discussed, I think, last time, of two years, they had to actually get the.
I put up to two years. I said I put up to two years just to cap the fee, and we, and it says up to 300, everything else is in the original bylaw. So we've kind of softened.
So the amendments were only a couple of words, it's not, it's, this, the, the, it said privately what was already there, it's a fine that's an amount and just needs to be in the, so, so how does the infraction get reported? So the, the historical commission would report the infraction to the board of legislators, or the legislators would then issue a fine, that's?
That's how I would be, I mean, I don't see any specific authority for the historical commission to do anything and get a fine.
No, no, I get it, I just, I'm trying to, I want to make sure that we understand it, because if we haven't been doing it, and there has been issues of this, then we probably should be enforcing.
Right.
If I can just add, I, I think really the main inspiration was that, that barn that came down, and that was what started this bylaw.
Which barn?
The barn back at the.
Housing Authority, and that's what got us to this point, to say there needs to be a consequence to basically, you know, by, essentially violating this bylaw, but ideally, it would never get that far.
So.
I mean, the reality is, you're just gonna wait, if you, if you want to tear it down, you're just gonna wait nine months, and then you're free and clear.
Yeah, fair enough, but did, so this bylaw wasn't even in place then, right?
Right.
But it was also told to be torn down by the building inspector, correct? I remember correctly?
I, I, I.
Yeah, you're right.
Please to fit, I have no idea.
Yeah, okay, understood. So, I mean, so, I guess it's a moot point, but if this, if this bylaw was, is being generated due to the fact that it was told to be torn down.
It was before, that actually, the first discussion was Taft at the corner, it was at the corner here.
Was the side.
It's the Taft at the orchard house?
Yeah. And I think that there's.
That's because there were people, there were people holding fines and.
Yeah.
I believe there was a cease and desist from the state that was ignored too.
But it happened, well, what had happened was that the building inspector gave them demolition permit, and, and they were asking, and there was no, no authorities.
A delay came down from the state, but they had already started to demolish the building as the, as that came down.
That day, yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was, it all happened on the same day. And it was a temporary delay from the state, right?
Right, and I think the, the main thing with this is, there have been reasons why the historical commission has been so keen to get this done. And it's not to stop people doing anything with their property, but it's if we can slow the process down, or at least make everybody work within a set process, so everybody knows what's happening. Otherwise, if you have a building inspector who's issuing demolition permits where it's not come to the historical commission or anybody else, you know, you're, you're out of control.
Well, the way, the way it was explained to me is, there is a process in place, but it was on the state level, which I wear that. Right, and the idea, right, that's why this is put in place, to give a local option. And it also seems like this discussion today, and that's been going on, is about shoring up the language that was in the existing bylaw that was maybe.
You're exactly right.
I mean, what anyone wanted to do was too much, so.
This is user-friendly, I think a lot more than the old one was, and so everybody knows what is going on and knows what, without, you know, the language, was I think, really.
So look, I think, the language is definitely nice to come up to, somebody who's used the demolition by law a few times, I, every time I use it, I never, I fill out the application, I remember you guys, house, we do.
Right.
It's a quick and simple process, I didn't, I, it is one meeting usually, I haven't had anything that was of historical significance, so, yes, I'm trying to stay. But the, the, this is much better than having the list, even though the list is just anything past the date right now, there's a list, everybody can see their name on it, they can go and either go and have it removed ahead of time, if, or if you know it, you have something to look at and say, oh, I'm already on this list, this house on this, I'm gonna have to go see. That is a huge piece, and I thank you.
That's, that's really, makes it very effective.
Well, and like I said, it's clear.
Yeah.
You know, no one can say, oh, I didn't know, it's clear, you know, everybody should know, I think.
Thanks, great, thanks, thanks for all your hard work, I know it's been a long time coming, but I know I am 100% on, on board with this.
Right, now we just got to get the town to agree too.
Maybe I'll say I'm not.
And thank you, Cindy, for this guidance, we so very much appreciate it, thanks.
Excellent, thank you to the whole committee as well.
Do you want, or would you consider?
Actually, I thought we're, that's kind of where we were.
Something we needed to talk about, right?
Well, we were only a certain way through the warrant, were we?
I thought we went through the most thing.
All right, do we want to talk about any of the other items that are on this? I mean, we had, since we've met, you've had citizen petitions that have come in, we've had, not that we necessarily need to talk too much about them.
They were there last week.
Right, because we never got through the, through the warrant, we ended because we went into the budget and never finished up, we went into executive.
We never voted on the warrant, which is why we're here. We didn't actually review all the articles either because of time, but we didn't take a formal vote, so, that's where we were. Sorry, my daughter, my daughter yelling. Sorry.
So, do we want, well, do we have, do we actually have numbers to go through with this? Because obviously, these are, these are the usual vague ones that have, see if the town votes to raise appropriate transfer available funds, talk for, you know, are there other, do we have numbers on that? Because we want to pay for this until we actually have the numbers in a formal language.
We don't need the numbers here, the numbers can be in the motions, because, but this, we have to vote on this to go to.
We can't table it, no.
Yeah, we can't wait. That's why we came in.
I can tell you which numbers I know, I mean, basic, I mean, so, you.
What's the deadline for the, what's the deadline for, for the? for the, for print to go to the print?
It's gonna go on the fourth.
April.
See, I was right, April fourth, I told you, right, so right, I mean, so
Big gap.
Uh, I know, I was really, I was hoping that was right, so, um we've been so close a couple of years, remember, we had to do mailers a couple of times, so I I never forget that day, post Diane, right? So, um, some of the numbers I can tell you, um which, go ahead, just go through the articles, I I don't have it in front of me, it's easier if you tell me which ones.
So we left off it, we left off at the bylaw one, well, I guess the three numbers though.
Yeah, so I moved, I I moved the articles around in case anybody is wondering, because I felt like it was more appropriate to have the financial articles and the board's articles, and then the citizens petitions, because people who are submitting petitions, like for the roosters or anything else, don't necessarily want to be, I mean, hopefully they would stay, but I don't think they wanna stay for three hours while we debate the amendments to bylaws. And so I just thought as a courtesy, we should move them up, right? So, um, hopefully that's okay. I mean, I don't think it makes a significant difference, but I do think if you're only coming for roosters, right? It it's helpful, so. Um, uh, numbers wise, I can tell you, we still have three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in free cash, so that's the amount that I'm gonna be recommending get transferred from um free cash into the town hall uh campus project. We've got about one nineteen from Inman Hill. I'll have all of these numbers in a chart that show you, here's the estimate of the project, which we're gonna get tomorrow, which is like seven hundred thousand, and then these are all the different funding sources that we have. Um, we'll have the bit of
Yeah, so I know the first eight articles looking at this are the things that we always do, this article nine. It said, excuse the town of over appropriate available funds from the June twenty ninth twenty twenty ATM article twenty four, a regulation admitted to. Is that transferring funds for for the campus project, or what is that?
No, that's, that's a request from the fire chief to return money from his capital project to capital.
We already talked about this one.
We did.
But I thought I thought we even voted that once, sorry, done once.
We just read through it, we haven't.
No, no, I meant, oh, I mean, we actually did it, I thought we did that at the last meeting, the last town meeting, no?
I, who can keep track of what year, what town meeting?
But the point is, he put it back on here, yeah.
Okay.
So who put article nine on here and asked for it?
Bill.
Okay.
Well, we'll leave it there, and as we did it.
Right, right.
Excellent.
We voted on it.
Taken away twice.
So then article ten is the brush, bro. Maybe we talked about that as budget?
Yes.
Uh, okay, there's improvements. At twelve, Indian Hill. East Street, that's, it is wrong, I remember that, I guess. Issue projects. As a fund for the practice problems, yeah. Price numbers all six. Tissues. So Roosters, eighteen. Nineteen, twenty, all positions. New York City position, then twenty two through maybe law CPA. Assessors, thirty one. That's all. Historic district thirty two. I heard Jerome, which is gonna be
I did send it.
She wanna pass it?
The policy open.
Can you remove it? Then we can actually pull it off now, right?
Pull it off, right?
Yes, exactly. I left them all on for tonight, so we could strike through while we're making the final edits with Cindy here.
Okay, I do have
Oh, you can take whatever you want tonight, and then we'll have a, once you make the motion as amended, it'll be cleaned up.
If we have a, now between, if the citizens, if the citizen that put a petition on here wants to drop it.
They can't.
They can.
They can suggest a town meeting to pass over, they can suggest a negative vote, they can suggest that they don't want it. For the, the problem is because it's a citizen petition and the number of signatures you have to get, it doesn't belong to one person, so one person has the authority, doesn't have the authority
Okay.
to take it off.
No, stretch in thirty three, which is
Um, there were, there were two items for the records room. One was for administrative files from CPA, which is got a state on, the other one is wrong, is the crossing of, yeah.
Thirty three. Thirty three, thirty degrees.
Just a question, I hear there's three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in free cash and it's gonna be allocated this town meeting? Three hundred thousand sitting in free cap, right, didn't get allocated last fall?
Yeah, so Mike, what happened was at the, at the meeting when we had, we had seven hundred and sixty three thousand dollars in free cash that got certified. And at the time, we had put forward it, um, we had, we're having discussions and put forward an article for about funding the town hall campus, but at the time, there was some confusion about um, other potential funding sources, and if we already had put the money aside, and all, a a lot of talk, and so at the time, what happened is they collectively decided, just we we didn't wanna allocate it to anything, so that we had it available for this exact purpose come May, once we had the numbers, and now we have them. So, but the number has been two fifty. Um, but if we can take three thirty from free cash, that, you know, every little bit goes a long way, right? So.
Okay. Demolition delay about three four is good. Sale of thirty six Milford Street. Sale of, or lease of Morrison Drive. Highway survey from elect two twenty.
Um, just on that, before you move on, just so you know, I am working with our HR officer Shelley to um poll and get some data, so we have a little bit more information one way or another um for town meeting, I should have that hopefully next week, or if not, it's definitely the last meeting in April before the meeting, so we can talk about a little in a little bit more detail. I'm requesting by population size as well, just so we have a little data.
Great. And the last two are accepting reviewing and will it said so, you is the one that offered that. Definitely.
Someone mentioned it last.
Yeah. Where citizens petition, were you guys planning on pulling off?
I wasn't, I wasn't planning on pulling anything, but I had a, I had a question about somebody need and they wanted to, could they remove it?
Anything else on that? Yeah, let's see, she approved warrant as amended, so in the town council review and approve. Second, second. I'll play it. Cindy, oh, sorry, hi. Discuss electronic voting system. Helen not able to join.
She can't be here, but I had her send over um this afternoon her recommendation, so she has been, um I, so I'm gonna just start by saying, we have talked about getting an electronic voting system the last couple of years. Um, and she had approached me a couple of weeks ago about the idea of funding it through opera funds, and I said, it's, how much is it? It's only eleven thousand dollars, like, we should get this for town meeting. So, um, I certainly think we have the capacity within the budget right now um in order to fund this, provided that it could actually get in-house by annual town meeting, right? So she has um provided a couple of different quotes. She has um polled around to see what other towns are using, and her recommendation is that we go forward with the Meridia system and order three hundred units. And then, um, I think it's Blackstone and Millville are also using that system, so if we needed to borrow additional units for a town meeting, um, we could do that, and so I'd like to move forward uh with purchasing a system so that we have it in place for May.
Yep, well, that was my only question, was if we were gonna buy enough, but now that we can share with another town, that's great.
Right.
Great idea, what's the cost? Uh, so four hundred is twelve grand, thirteen grand, hold on. Yeah, it's for thirteen thousand for four hundred, so figure, hold on. Three fifty is eleven. So minus, uh, so it's for minus three thousand, so roughly, yeah, roughly ten grand. And what what is your, what's the funding source?
So, right now, we still have money available within new equipment, we also have money available within a couple of the smaller new and used equipment uh capital lines, and you know, um, in what, thirty days, we'll be able to start transferring? So I feel fairly comfortable that this is something, and I think we still have room, actually, I didn't check it today, within selectmen miscellaneous. So I think we have a couple of different places that we could um certainly justify spending this from. I think we all have been waiting, so.
Well, we've talked about it a few times, right?
Yeah.
And then we
Well, it always comes up when there's a voice vote that's, you know, and that's when it becomes an issue.
Not a valid, no.
You feel like you left town meeting, like you really didn't get the right result or whatever, so I think the answer to that.
Okay, no, it's the motion. Certainly a motion to do that, yeah.
Um, I don't really need a motion, um, I mean, we're not signing a contract.
Yeah, the money's already appropriated, so.
Yeah, you're not, um, I just, I'm gonna be, we're gonna be making a large purchase, I basically just need you to be aware of what it is and have you say which one you want. Um, and it's basically, it's their handwritten quotes because the value is below, so it's, we can just move forward with purchasing a system.
Are there multiple vendors that sell this?
There are, actually, um, and that was one of the questions, and um, and, but she I I I accept her recommendation and her reasons, it's good to use a system that our neighbors are also using. And for those, right, and have used and they're happy with, and that's good. Right.
Sorry, sorry. It's in a big, I guess my question is, is it a big deal to ask them to just give us something in writing or an email if there's
They're having
So
We have.
So here's, so based upon
embedded on somewhere here, yeah, we'll see.
And there's no recurring cost with this, which with turning technologies has a recurring cost, and the the price is pretty close, within three thousand, it looks like.
Exactly.
And the big thing is, the other towns are already using Meridia.
Yes, I personally use turning technologies before at conferences, it's that system that they use to do all the quiz shows and whatnots, if you've ever been to any of those things, it's always turning technologies. Um, I I assume that this Meridia system is the same, maybe a little more scaled down. Um, as long as it calculates the votes. Right, correctly, and we know how to use it.
I was gonna say, correctly, right?
Yeah.
It's not a big percentage jump at the end, right?
Yeah, as long as it's not pressed red, green, or yellow, right, these are actually yes or no, right? So, I mean, as long as, um, it can, they can be trained and it can be in place, that's my big parameter. If I find out for some reason that we cannot expect delivery by May, then I think we should wait until maybe even November and fund it, you know, like, I, we'll just see. But I, hopefully, it'll come together.
But why, why wait? Because then
Only because
if we're gonna do it and we've got a quote, everything's just gonna keep going up, why don't we?
Well, because then I could, I could use it, um, we, I could plan to spend it out of a fund rather than transferring out of another fund in case another potential thing came up, like we could use that money this year potentially to offset the snow and ice deficit with transfers. That's, I'm just saying, just thinking of financially, right, while we prioritize what gets funded and when.
Alright.
Okay.
So we got
That's it.
Must it rock the block? Oh, it's always There is though.
I do have a question to
Yeah, I mean, we have already asked it for.
Are we talking about closing down Maple Street and Main Street up to sixteen?
Yeah, so from from Blackstone to ultimately up to Elm will be closed, you'll still be, but we're not gonna extend the party that far. We have to keep the post office open, because the trucks come in at two thirty and five thirty. So we have to allow them to come in Elm and then get over, and then extend up there. Uh, we're having a little trouble finding carnival, seems to be some booking issues, but we're in getting uh some other companies now, I just got a bunch today, to get the carnival up at the corner. Um, and everything else seems to be just kind of progressing along, uh, from what we were discussing before. So, again, bands, stage, I think we got Justin was, the stage was, did you guys get back, there was a, uh, there was like a small stage, and then there was this kind of really cool stage, and then there was this insane, it was gonna be cool stage, but we didn't go with the insanely cool one.
We've been definitely, we've been on stage though, right, here in the center?
Nope, we're gonna keep it out of the main drag, we're gonna plop it in the parking lot over at, um, like in front of Little Country Bunkins was, I think, in in the post office building.
Did I hear Aerosmith's this place?
Absolutely. So, yeah, uh, I, I don't know, did we go with the bands last time, it looks like we we've got the Peach Eaters, which is a really cool band, uh, as well as some other bands that are gonna play the book today. Uh, AJ Valley from Upton is working with us on that, which is, he's a big music guy in the area, right? They're gonna, it'll be professionally sounded and lighted, and it's gonna, and then we're, now we're working on vendors next to food vendors tab businesses, school, working together with them, to get some of the committees and all the um student council, whatnots, whatever they'd like to do. We have a company that also, that's called, uh I part, I don't know the exact name, Something Party, they're out of Rhode Island, they have multiple items that you can rent for the day. So if you have a business or something, or if it's a committee that wants to do something, um, you can, for not a lot of money, you can rent a a game for the day, they bring it, they set it up, and you know, you can make money off it. It's like for fundraising, so there's, uh, we're trying to make it as as uh easy as possible for, to help people to find things to do. There's gonna be a cornhole champ, um, sorry, uh, tournament on the uh, on the grassy area behind the um Mr. Miss Law's building, they have also given us the okay to set up a tent there, so that you can get out of the sun of, well, hoping it's gonna be a beautiful sunny day, so if you wanna eat, uh, from getting stuff from the vendors, if you wanna sit down, there'll be a place to eat over there, we're looking to maybe do a magician at a certain time, things like that, just to keep all kinds of things going on, and, yeah, it's be very busy. So, uh, and then at the end of the day, we're gonna end with fireworks and Saturday.
Did you say in the carnival up across sixteen up?
Yeah, say on the Fino, on the Fino corner there, if if they'll allow us to do it, or
Yeah.
Or be on the, or you'll be tired, so, right, so we're gonna hopefully use parking for, in in the field, um that's uh, the further the the second field down for parking, people then cruise through, go through the carnival, and then come down into here. Uh, and we're gonna try to, we're trying to get the carnival for two days, uh, which I think I've already talked about, so that that will give advertising for the block party Friday into Saturday. Bennett?
John.
It's our next
The motion.
Second. I so moved. Thanks, everybody, yeah. Thanks, Kim.